All right, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's 6:01 on March 24th, and my goal is to get us out of here by 7 o'clock tonight. I want to remind everyone that we are being recorded. We have Area 58, and we have our owl here as well. And at this point, I'd like to thank all of you for being here this evening and taking part in the important work of your school committee to make sure that Plimpton Elementary can function at a high level that we all expect. And at this time, if there's anybody from the audience who would like to speak to the committee, I'll entertain that now. All right, seeing none, as per our usual standing during the committee meeting, if you have a question or comment, as long as it's respectful and on point, we'll entertain that from the crowd as we go through the proceedings. I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of our February 24th, 2025 minutes. May I have so moved? Do I have a second? Is there any further discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? All right, it's unanimous. All right, moving on to school committee correspondence. So, I wanted to inform the committee and the administration that the Halifax Board of Selectmen and the Plimpton Board of Selectmen have already voted to support the No Cuts to Public Schools Act that was filed by Senator Markey. And Eric Crone, who's the chair of the Select Board from Kingston, is taking it up tomorrow, so we should have all three of our communities supporting the federal legislation Senator Markey put forth to make no cuts to public education. I also wanted to let you know that I received a letter from Governor Healy, and I've been sworn into the graduation council as one of the 37 members of that council. And as your representative, my goal is to be vigilant, to maintain flexibility at the local level for how students can demonstrate, and teachers and administrators can evaluate the attainment of the benchmarks that the state creates. I think it's very important for the teachers and administrators who work with children to have that flexibility and not have it come on down from high. So, proud to represent you all there. Onto new business. On the agenda this evening, we have town meeting, FY25 budget adjustments, and addressing deficit discussion, and possible vote. So you may recall, two meetings ago, Sarah and I were talking about not knowing quite where we were with the rural aid for Plimpton. And the town did come back and let us know that they currently have $107,000 on hand for rural aid, and we anticipate a final check for another $37,000. So, working with the deficit we've had this year, working with the fact that we have a $35,000 earmark from HVAC system on our roof, that's actually going to cost closer to $80, $85,000. And given that we've used $50,000 from our special ed reserve fund, I have some suggestions of how we use the $144,000 in the rural aid that we have on hand for this year. So that would be the following. We would allocate $50,000 to the HVAC, which would give us $85,000 to work with to finish that unit, so we don't lose the $35,000 in earmark. We would hold back $54,000 to fill the what's right now about a $49,000, $50,000 deficit for FY25. If there's any creep on that, we'd have a little bit of wiggle room. And to put an article onto the warrant for the town to use $40,000 of rural aid to transfer into our special ed stabilization fund to replenish almost back up to full capacity what we drained down this year as part of our budget crisis. Do you guys have any questions, comments, or concerns about these ideas?
The HVAC, is that... do we have an estimate, a quote, or what is that?
So last time we talked with Mike Lawless, he was giving us a number between $75,000 and $80,000 for the air handlers we have on the roof of this building. So this would give us $85,000 to complete that.
And that's one of six that need to be replaced sooner than later. We have seven total air handlers on the roof, whom was replaced in December of 2020 with CARESAP funds, because it was necessary for the shape operation of the building. So we got lucky then, and back then they cost $35,000. So it's been a little bit of inflation causing of those. And that's why the grant was for 35, or the earmark was $35,000, because we didn't have any other numbers. So it's a little bit more than that, as we can see. So it's one of those expenses that we're coming towards, but we hate to lose the assistance from the state. So we're going to try and take care of both of those, and then we only have five minutes to replace.
Yeah. I think it's really incumbent upon us to do that HVAC system and to utilize that $35,000, not just so we don't lose the $35,000 that was already put up, but Senator Fernandez and Representative Lenatra reached out to myself and to our town manager, and both of us asked for another $80,000 for another air handler in FY26 from the state budget as an earmark as well. So we're asking to continue the process on the roof of this school, using those earmark funds, so we really just want to make sure that we use in good faith the funds that was secured by Senator Moran for us last year.
That makes sense. I just...
Yeah. Yep. So, it would put us on a good track to continue to be updating these and not having them all getting replaced at the same time, which would potentially lead to them all failing at the same time. Any further comment on this? Okay, so, I make a motion that the town of Plimpton, on behalf of the Plimpton School Committee, utilize the funds in the rural aid account of $144,000 in the following way. $50,000 to supplement the HVAC earmark, $40,000 to be used in an article to transfer into the special ed reserve fund, and $54,000 to be used to offset the FY25 deficit here at the Dennett Elementary School. Do I have a second? I have a second from John. Is there any further discussion? Any concerns, questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, everyone. So we're on to reports of standing committees, admin review?
No.
No meeting? Okay. Policy. We had a policy meeting last week, and it was run by Megan Aaronholz, our food director, and by Dr. Clifford. Many of these reviews and policy were brought up because of a coordinated program review by DESI, and they're to bring us into compliance with civil rights language that needed to be updated. Because of that, I would make the suggestion under our policy BGB that we pass these policies in a single read tonight for emergency measures, so they're in place, so we can be in compliance to the fullest extent of the law with civil rights laws for the federal and state governments. Do I have a motion to accept these as a single read?
Yes.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Can we waive the reading of the actual policies?
So moved.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I make a motion to accept policy JICFB, JKAA, ACE as a first and final read to adopt as new. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Great. Negotiations.
We met today for the teacher, the PTA negotiations, they're ongoing. The next meeting is May 5th.
Great. Thank you very much. Union 31, there is a meeting on April 10th, and that's followed up by a Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting. I won't be able to be at that because I have to do parent-teacher conferences at my day job, so I apologize for that. Moving on to PAC?
The March 6th meeting was canceled. There's nobody coming.
All right. And capital improvement, I'll have to coordinate with Mike to get him out for town properties, but I think we have quite a bit to work with right now with the earmark now being fulfilled and being able to get that HVAC up there, and maybe we can talk to the same company if we're lucky for the earmark for next year as well. Okay. But that was on me for not getting Mike coordinated with that.
Did you want to... again, I was going to bring this up in the budget discussion, but where you're bringing this up, I just wanted to ask the facility assessment for $50,000 in the water upgrades. I didn't want... again, if it's not the right year, it's not the right year, but I didn't want it to get lost in the shuffle, because I know it's been a difficult budget year.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, I think we should, from a town properties perspective, we should talk with Mike about that, because I think that... my guess is that the facilities assessment is probably a high number, because I mean, already did an assessment of the roofs of the building, which they should be able to
Work from.
Work from, which means that if you need additional assessment of not the roofs, and maybe an upgrade of that, and we all know that they're not good.
Yeah.
But I don't think that's going to be the year, this year. But we should talk with him, so we can start trying to get that figured in, either into this budget, or if it's a smaller number, maybe we can figure out a way to fund it through town properties.
Okay. Sounds good.
But we have to have those discussions to get it on the...
Absolutely. That was my bad. That was not Mike. Just had some other plate spinning in the air at the time, so I'll get on that. Legislative agent. It's not awesome. The federal government cuts have finally directly impacted schools in Massachusetts with the cut to nutritional assistance in some programs. But even without direct impacts on the schools, that was only about $14 million for the entire state of Massachusetts. Cutbacks to nonprofits, cutbacks to other portions of federal dollars that the state of Massachusetts relies on, has caused Governor Healy and the legislature to kind of clamp down on what they're willing to look at right now. Governor Healy put out a $62 billion budget back in January. $16 billion of that is from federal funds. So there's real trepidation right now from basically anybody you talk to in the legislature about really leaning into the crisis that is facing public schools across the state of Massachusetts. I'm sure many of you are aware that Duxbury narrowly lost an override vote this weekend. Did 4,000 people went to the polls, it failed by 200 votes. Devastating to see what impacts it's going to have on the classrooms and on the students at Duxbury. Hopefully tonight, we can avoid a similar situation here in Plimpton. I have all the faith in the world that we're going to be able to bring a budget in that meets the needs of the town, but also the students of Dennett. But the reality is, the cost creep that we've seen in special ed and facilities, just in the cost of energy over the past several years, Chapter 70 has not kept up with it. Never mind Circuit Breaker not really fulfilling what it's intended to do, or MSBA really helping out with the buildings of new facilities. So, with that in mind, I am continuing to push. I have dinner tomorrow night with Senator Fernandez, Rep. Lenatra, and Rep. Badger. Rep. Badger used to be the chair of the Plymouth School Committee and a very active member of MASC, and it's with the chairs of all the school committees from the South Shore. So, we're going to break bread together, and we're going to discuss the harsh realities of what we've been dealing with in a budgetary front for the past couple of years, and anticipation of what we might need for next year's budget. So, we're continuing to push hard. Day on the Hill is coming up. That's MASC-sponsored event to go up to speak to our legislators on Beacon Hill. If any of you'd like to come, I'd be happy to have you as my guest. Please just let me know.
When is it?
I believe it's May 4th or May 5th. Right now, dates are a little bit... I'm on Focused on Tomorrow Night, so I apologize for that. All right, so that's what I have for legislative agent. Single signature warrants.
I am circulating a warrant for your signatures right now totaling $104,312.83, which I will bring to the town tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Sarah. Moving on to admin. CASA and principals report.
I can talk a little bit about CASA, regarding my principal's report, if that's helpful.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So we have 251 students currently at the Dennett. We just had Read Across America Week, which was a lot of fun and a big success. Thank you, Mrs. Hanson, as well as Mrs. McBride for all their work on that. CASA brought in Wally the Green Monster for a reading adventure again, which was really fun. We had Wally a couple of years ago. The kids really enjoyed it. It was neat to see our young kids, but also our sixth graders having a blast, cracking up. It was a really wonderful event. We're grateful to CASA for organizing that. We just had our PD half-day recently. Our staff did edge of climate training. We had an all-school rocks meeting on kindness in the beginning of March. On March 7th, we also had our sixth-grade band students participate in the district-wide band concert for 6 through 12. I watched that video today with Ms. Marasco. We were really proud of them. They did a wonderful job. We just had our parent-teacher conferences. Thank you to all the families who took time out of their schedules to come meet with us. It's always great to see the families, to talk about the kids' successes, and also to plan for the remainder of the school year as they're transitioning at their current grade level. The book fair was again a wonderful success. Thank you to Mrs. Me for always handling that here, and it's something that the kids look forward to every time we have them. Our student council survey is out and available. That's been shared a number of ways. It was available as a QR code outside the classrooms for conferences. People could just scan it and do it while they were waiting. It also went out on the weekly WAG. Mrs. Hanson was kind enough to also submit it all through a parent-square blast. So we'll continue to get that information out there, so hopefully we'll get as many responses for the student survey as we can. Our MCAS training was conducted at our last staff meeting, so we are gearing up for MCAS season. Our kids will start taking the test in April. We also have a new hire. We're welcoming tomorrow Matthew Donahue as our new building-based substitute. So we're really excited to have that position filled. We're very happy to have Matthew on board with us tomorrow. And on a side note, I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Hanson, as well as all of our teaching, support, and intervention staff. We've been kind of short-staffed over the last few weeks, and I think Dennett does what Dennett does. Everybody pulls together, everybody pitches in, and I'm truly very grateful for all the support of every staff member. This building has just kept us up and running and making sure that the kids always have what they need when they need it. So, thank you. That concludes my principal's report.
And we'll echo that as well. We appreciate everyone stepping up and keeping things flowing in the right direction. Thank you. All right, so moving on to our Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you. For the financial report, one of the things, when I prepare for every meeting, I sit down with the report that is in your packets, and I go through line by line, and I make notes of things. And as I go through my notes, I compare them to what I've talked about previously, and there's nothing new. I can read through all of my comments from previously if you'd like, or we can move on.
Is everybody okay with moving on?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Sarah.
Adult meal cost, so I need to let you know that there is going to be an increase in the adult meal cost. This does not have anything to do with any budgetary items. This is because the food service program was audited by DESI, and it was brought to our attention that the cost for adults' meals is not in alignment with the federal formula. So to move into alignment with the federal formula for adult meals, meals are going to go from $3.74, which rounds up to $4 with tax, up to $5.25, which would be $5.62 with tax, beginning in August of 2025.
And that's because a lower price would indicate that potentially the kids' meals were supplementing the cost of the adults' meals.
Correct.
Which puts us out of compliance with the feds.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then for grants, awards, and acceptance, we have no new grants or donations at this time.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah? All right, and moving on to our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Clifford.
Okay, I just have a few things tonight. The first thing is the Evaluation Working Group, which is a group that's been together for a few years, met a few weeks ago. We just checked in on the changes that were made last year. Also, the District Literacy Group met on March 6th and spent the whole day with the Hill from literacy and created a new literacy plan for the district. It was really a great meeting. We had five categories, and we created action steps. We separated into five different groups, came up with a draft plan. That is being shared out right now with the District Literacy Leadership Team, and that timeframe will end soon. We're then will share it out with all of the faculties during faculty meetings, and then take input from teachers, and then the final piece I'll share with you here. So that's some great things, and moving along with that. March 6th, Professional Development Day, literacy plan work happened, edge of climate work happened, and specialists worked on speaking and listening standards, and paraprofessionals were able to participate in a DESI training. And at the high school and middle school, the teachers worked in departments to refine and develop common assessments and analyze data. The Math Curriculum Review Group has now met with reps from iReady, and then on March 18th, we met with a rep from HMH, which is into math, and that was a great presentation. And now, the rubrics of the scoring for each one of those is out among the committee members to rate each one of the curriculums. That will close on April 14th. We'll meet on the 15th as a group and select a recommended curriculum at that point, and we'll come... I'll come back here to this group to explain a little bit about that when that happens. Let's see. Focused, tiered focus monitoring surveys went out to families, they went out to students, they went out to faculty and staff. The results from those surveys were analyzed and shared with the group, and also shared with individual principals, so that they can use that feedback for school improvement plans, and then we'll also use for our strategy for district improvement. And on April 10th, at the Joint School Committee meeting, we'll present data for the K through 6 level, and then for the 7 through 12 level. And then also, at the last school committee meeting of the year, present more local data here as far as how benchmark data and how things have gone this year. So that's it, in a nutshell.
Thank you, Dr. Clifford. Any questions? All right, so we're moving on to the Superintendent, Dr. Prue.
So for my update tonight, there is a proposed meeting schedule for Plimpton School Committee for next year. It is the section in the red-orange kind of font, in keeping with the number of meetings that we had this year, and it appears that we can keep them all on the same evening. If it was something out of the ordinary, it would be highlighted in yellow. In addition, you have the calendar view as well, so you can see how they fall on the calendar. I'm hoping for the committee to approve the Plimpton School Committee schedule for the 25, 26 school year.
Any concern with the proposed dates for meeting next year? No? Would anybody like to make a motion to accept? Okay, so moved. And do I have a second? Second. John, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. All right, so before we begin the budget discussion, I just want to slow down for a minute and say thank you. Thank you to the teachers, thank you to the parents who've shown up. Thank you for the committee for walking through this and really doing a deep dive on the numbers and where we are. I'd like to thank the administrative team, both at Central Office and here at Dennett, for working with me and working with the town. And I'd be remiss if I didn't give our town manager, Liz Dennehy, a lot of credit for helping to coordinate what we needed from the school side and what the town could do from its side, coordinating multiple departments, the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee. It is nice to have a town that knows how to work together, even when we might not all agree on things. It always feels like a team. So, I was working with Liz all day long with what we could do from the town side and coordinating with Dr. Prue and with Sarah for the financials and the budget, and Dr. Clifford had to get involved, and we retooled and reworked some of the numbers. And we believe we're at a place tonight where we have a budget that can support the needs of the students here at the Dennett, can maintain all of our staffing as we promised, and to also meet the financial needs of the school, of the town as well, with the school's budget in cooperation with the other budgets. So, without further ado, I will now hand it over to Dr. Prue and our team, so we can just discuss any of the budget items that you might have questions about, or the audience may have questions.
So, I'm going to hand it over to our director, because she has prepared a slide in the event that the school committee is able to vote a budget number this evening. And in addition, I believe she's put in a summary of some changes since the last time we met. So I'm going to ask Sarah to provide her summary.
So, the last time we met, I was asked to make some changes to the agricultural tuitions and transportation lines, as well as the homeless and foster care transportation lines. So I made those changes, and then we had some changes in curriculum lines, additions in curriculum lines, and subtractions in PD lines, and the total operating, the line item budget that I put in your packets, it says updated is $4,703,363. So if from that $4,703,363, we subtract out the anticipated $60,000 Circuit Breaker, I'm sorry, 60,000 anticipated 240 grant, $117,272 in anticipated Circuit Breaker, $32,091 in the 2025 REIT grant, $64,000 in the anticipated rural aid for next year, that would make the town operating budget $4,430,000.
Okay. So, $4,430,000 was the target number for us to try and reach, to help all the other departments in town see their budgets through without creating an override situation for This is with the understanding that all of the rural aid that comes in next year is going to be applied directly to the operating budget here at Dennett. I continue to be hopeful we can get rural aid increased to the $60 million that we've been trying to get for the past four or five years at this point. So this is anticipated based on $16 million of funding, which was in Governor Healy's House One version of the budget. So any additional funds that come in will sit in reserve for us, and again, could help us if we have a mid-year budget deficit, God forbid. What I would really like to see, and I'd like this committee to commit to, is if we get a sizable increase there, that we come back to the table and we add additional aids to our staff here at the Dennett for next year to help maintain the quality of education, but also to help keep kids in their home school, instead of, you know, ending up not having the right amounts of supports here and having more kids go out of district as well. So, I'm going to keep pushing really hard on the rural aid to try and get that number up, specifically to try and get at least one more aid into our staff for next year. So, do any of you have any questions about any of the lines on the budget, or where we have arrived at tonight?
So, I know there was a lot of work today to try and get us to where we're at, and I truly appreciate all that. I think, you know, and I know this has been a difficult year and year of transition. I just hope next year that we don't have this much excitement, both for the deficits and things like that, but also so that, like, we can have the time to look over this. And I did see that in the thing, but I haven't been at my computer since 3 o'clock. So I haven't had a chance to look over this at all, but I know that the numbers are matching up. But it's very difficult to be able to do job on this side of the table, but you can't look at the underlying numbers as it's going on. And I do truly support, and do hope that we can get some additional rural aid that we can look to. I've been talking about adding aids back since we started the discussion, but we're tight. And the town, I think still thinks this leaves us with, what kind of percentage is this, 11%?
Well, I want to talk about the percent for a minute.
Yeah.
Because we came in basically with a $4 million budget last year, and then by October, we had a $250,000 overage.
Right.
Right? So, do you want to base the increase off of the $4 million, or of the 4.25 million?
Well, that's what I was saying last...
Right. So, if you base it off the $4 million to 4.4, right? Right. So if you base it off the $4 million to 4.4, right, it is 11% increase.
Yeah.
But this year, to operate this building, we used 400, $4,250,000.
Yes.
So our increase, if you take it from there to this, is a 4.25% increase.
Right, but to the town, it's 11.
To the town, it's 11.
And that's, that's the part that, you know, with working together with the town, we're able to get them to absorb it again. And that's a different challenge. This is the third year in a row that we've had to absorb these increases in rural deficits. So it's just a challenge because the well is getting drier.
Agreed, the well, yes.
And if you're about the rural aid, you're 140,000, well, $200,000 under in trying to be able to deal with some of these priorities. And I know that I could see some people saying, well, the 40K, well, we don't really need to do that to put it into spend, but we absolutely do because we have no other place to pull from if something comes up. I mean, that's safe. Cause this year, that's $50,000.
Right.
So.
I understand, I understand the actual impact of the dollars and cents on the overall budget. But I would have no problem sitting down with anyone who questions this percentage increase and explaining to them that it, that is completely misleading. And we covered a huge chunk of that overage ourselves here.
Yeah.
By doing a budget freeze and by utilizing funds that the school department select board put aside for rainy day, we had one. And that the rural aid money was meant to be spent on the schools anyways.
Absolutely.
You know, so I would say that as a team, the town and the school department worked well together to plug this hole and to have a very nominal increase over that $250,000 increase from last year to a $430,000 increase. I understand the optics of it and I would be happy to have that conversation with anybody who's confused by the number.
No, that's fine. But I do think though that we need to, we just need to make sure that we, that we have more transparency for the committee members to be able to look at the numbers as we're going through the process.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Because it's very, it was very difficult this year to do this. I mean, I sat down myself and went through trying to understand what we're doing.
I, I understand what you're saying and I agree. I, I put these numbers into a spreadsheet myself so I could do running tallies. And I tried to make a budget from last year to the best of my ability to try and cross-reference categories. Sarah, it is your intent for next year's budget that you'll be able to populate this year's budget and next year's budget?
So when I started off talking about the budget in January, I explained that we were doing a chart of accounts conversion. So this is the single year where we won't be able to have side-by-side comparison of '24 and '25. Next year, the budget will be back out of the, out of the financial software, all of those sheets that you're used to. And you'll be able to see the FY '25, I'm sorry, the FY '26, FY '27, side-by-side comparisons with the percent increases.
That will be wonderful. I will, and I think I said this last time, I think I like this nothing better. It's more granular and easier to understand.
Compliant with the state?
Well, there's that too. But I, and you won't ever have to do this again, meaning switching, because you will be heading off into retirement and probably getting some rest. But I, I do think that just the lesson out there to the, to the poor finance managers of school districts, in a year that you transition, there has to be some bridge because this, this made it very difficult. But I'm looking forward to next year. Hopefully it will be a better budget all around and we'll have this to be able to compare. Back to how I did it for nine years. But thank you for the work done though.
And I know we've made adjustments since you sent out the updated line item budget.
Try updated and put it in the.
Right, but I might have printed this out before you and I spoke. So this might be irrelevant at this point. But I noticed there was some duplications of lines within the budget.
The 43,000, it, there was an error in the formula. That's not, that has been fixed.
Great. And then on instructional hardware, other 2453, did the first two lines were identical reference codes, but one had 8,000, one had 2,000 in it? I didn't know if those were split out on purpose or if they just populated weirdly.
Just pulling it up right now.
Yep, thank you.
The second, so there's instructional hardware that is coming from the curriculum coordinator for elementary ed and there's instructional hardware coming from the tech department.
Good, so it's just finer detail.
And so I separated, I separated those out just so I, so I could keep track of whose was whose.
Okay, so similar question on 4225, building security system?
Same thing. One of them is the cameras, which comes through the tech department and the other one is the actual, the flood. I'm not sure what the name of the flight alarm system or whatever the alarm system is. So one of them comes through maintenance, one of, so those are, I contemplated putting them together, but it literally is two, when we do the budget and when we spend, that will be combined $8,988 for the.
And I appreciate the detail being split out, but I also appreciate the explanation. And for anybody who's wondering, you know, do we just look at the $4,430,000 when we're coming up with the budget? No. You know, we spend hours scouring over the line item budget and looking at lines that are populated with hundreds of dollars and thousands of dollars to arrive at that $4.4 million total sum. So I believe due diligence has been done on behalf of the committee and due diligence has been done on behalf of the town and the school administration. Are there any further questions before we put this to a vote? Questions? Alex, go ahead.
Line 241, 0.140, is it?
What category code is that under Alex?
2410.
Two?
Textbooks.
Is it, is that the only line item that would carry textbooks? Or is it, is it actually zero going into the year?
So we got an updated number for textbooks if Dr. Clifford wants to mention that or Sarah wants to talk about?
$45,307.
That makes a lot more sense.
Yes, sir.
The other question I had, you and I talked about it briefly a little bit, PACES. So I understand PACES to be something to the effect of an outsourced behavioral management service that we pay for?
It's not only behavioral management, it's an at-home service or wraparound for students.
For wraparound?
Wraparound services. So services that are run with students, IEP.
Okay, sure.
If it's determined at the home through an assessment and evaluation process that it would benefit the child to also have some of those services at home that provided that to PACES.
And we, but we also use it for in-house services for behavioral management and IEP?
Use it for in-house consults.
Okay. What, how, how much are we paying for PACES and what line item does that come out of?
Comes out of contractual services and I can give you the total footwind in one second, just in a pull it up.
I believe it was $53,000.
And PACES comes from the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, which Dan sits on the board of. And wraparound services are, you've heard of extended school years for students on IEPs, but there's also extended school days and there's these wraparound services that even go into the home to help support the student in life skills development at home beyond what we can do during the school day here in the building.
So for Plimpton, I have a total of $53,035 looking for next year. However, I also have another sheet where I track any additional costs that have come through between the time we submit this budget and students who have IEP meetings who have determined to have services and there are few students on that sheet that will need to be added to that. So the minimum you'd have is $53,035.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, I was following down a rabbit hole and Jason asked about it a little bit, but I didn't know if there was an opportunity to insource some of that work with a staff member in-house that might be potentially, don't take this the wrong way, a little bit more effective than having someone that is off-site, not necessarily having daily interaction with the students. And also, you know, we're year over year for what, eight, 10 years now of student enrollment going up and I'm not aware of too much admin level additions to the staff. So I wasn't sure if there was an opportunity to insource, insource some of the work and potentially get more benefit to the student population because of it and we would normally pay for PACES.
We could do that and we could post for that. We have a discussion or email topic back and forth. Our stipend pay, hourly pay is $40. Right now, PAC offers much more money for the hourly rate for the services that they deliver.
Oh, am I saying it wrong? Is it not PACES?
It's PACES, yes. PAC means Pilgrim Area Collaborative.
Oh, okay.
So PACES and PAC, it gets a little confusing. What I have done is I've asked that the home evaluations be outsourced because we have a couple of situations where the same people that are recommending services at IEP meetings are doing the evaluations. And not that anybody's doing anything wrong, but it's better, it's, it's better and cleaner to have one person do the assessments and then the team to discuss what the services might look like.
Okay.
So that's the first step. The second step would to be looking at the idea that you would have to post it and then have people agree to work after hours for $40 an hour. I'm not sure if that's a possibility. Right now, my transition assessments at the high school, even though I have two fully certified transitionally endorsed special education teachers, it's not enough money for them to do the assessment. So I have to go out and I have to pay something like $1,600 to $4,000 for these transition assessments.
I, I do a question. We communicated about this a little bit, Chris, about whether or not it can be a combination of the two. And I guess that's been my question as well. If in theory, we switched over, so we use PACES, $53,000, we're talking about about seven kids benefit from that. There are some home consults that are being provided currently. We do not have any students currently getting direct home services from PACES currently. That has changed from year to year depending upon the population, what the needs are. The majority of what we're using PACES for currently is in-house. It's where we need assistance during FBAs, writing behavior intervention plans. They come in and we, they consult with us, really one morning a month is the amount of consult that we get. But we are, you know, kind of paying, I think, more top dollar when we need those assessments done. So I guess my, my question is similar to Alex's, is, is there a way to kind of look at the bucket of money that we're already budgeting for behavior consults, shift some of that over to having someone maybe part-time on staff that's available to all students to help us meet the behavioral needs from day to day? We'll also keep in reserve, you know, a pocket of that money for when we do need someone to go into the home, provide, you know, direct home support. So that's, that's my question.
Again, it's a couple of things moving on. Remember, the state put IEP would always be to external agency and that could be, you know, that could be contested. Second of all, you have to have the qualified personnel who are willing to go into homes and families and provide services or consultations. Third is you'd have to weigh that options. Is it more expensive to have a full-time employee or a part-time employee with benefits and things like that than it is for PACES services? I think we have to tie the PACES services to the IEP goals and see what the impact and the outcome is for those services. And if they're not beneficial, we need to challenge that. That would be my first step.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's the right path to go. I just, and I know this year is probably not the correct year to, to pursue it at all, but at least have it as a talking point to consider at some point in the 27 talks.
We do have enough personnel inside this building right now. We have a full-time school psychologist who does not have a full-time caseload, which would be about 135 students or something like that. There's only 46 to 48 students on IEPs at this school. And then Ms. Markalini is also certified as a school psychologist as well. So I think with those two resources already embedded into the building, we could begin to shift, if they were agreeable, those types of services, one or two students at a time.
It's a possibility. I've been here a couple of times and I've seen Ms. Markalini not busy. I'm not sure when she would do that, but it's a possibility, I guess.
But you bring up a good point, Alex. And actually, it was just a couple of years ago where we moved Mrs. Markalini into her current position as the coordinator of student supports from the role of being the school psychologist and then hired a school psychologist as well, knowing that we had a growing population and kids were presenting as more dynamic than we had seen in the past. Not that that trend isn't continuing and there might not be need in the future. So you bring up a great point and it's something we can definitely continue to explore in the future. Do you have any further questions?
Those are my two for now.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else before we vote the budget?
Yeah, I can't, I can't leave that without saying something.
Please.
I mean, I just, I think this committee has always been this way, but we're always interested and will advocate when there are ways to be able to bring services in, to advocate for new services here that make sense. But it always has to be a bit of that, this is what we're gonna, this is what we need and this is what we're gonna get from it. So we did add 2018 or so, we added an, you know, additional special ed teacher position here. And thank God we did, because they are extraordinarily busy right now. And if we hadn't done that, I, you know, I don't know where we would be. And there was a lot of resistance to doing that. Maybe it was in 2020.
It was actually 2020.
2020.
We were all.
A lot of resistance to doing that, but we were told the budget number we needed to hit and we worked with our budget and we got there and we had the position. So I would encourage both the folks here in the, in the building as well as the administration to always be looking for ways that we can improve what we're delivering. Again, to me, the goal is always to try and keep our students in the building every way we can. And advocating resources for that can be actually cost-effective. So, but we have to make the case for that. So that's what comes, that's the work that comes with it. But you'll, you'll always have a, certainly for me and probably from my colleagues here, very willing to listen and take that in. Something we feel pretty strong about.
Yeah. We appreciate people who lean in and ask good questions and bring up ideas we haven't considered.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do you mind if I read off your screen?
No, you go.
All right. So I'd like to make the motion that we move the Plimpton School Committee's budget of $4,430,000 as the fiscal '26 of local education budget, our operating budget. And further that the total appropriation of $4,430,000 is in compliance with the Education Reform Act of 1993 and recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. And further that the school committee directs the superintendent to allocate the following additional funding sources, which total $273,363. FY '26 anticipated circuit break or special ed reimbursement of $117,272. An anticipated FY '26 grant revolving account funding totaling $156,091. The final approved expenditures for the schools will be $4,703,363. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Is there any further discussion?
I have one. I don't want to catch anybody by surprise. Are we gonna have any problem? No, no, this is for you. And I'm looking to you for sage advice. Do we have any problem coming up in the future where we will fail to maintain our special ed funding in a way that we?
The maintenance of ethic.
Yes. Are we in threat of that with any of the moves we've made budgetarily?
So there's two things that will guide us to answer that question. The first is, what, what budget will they use for me to compare? Sarah, if they use the 2025 budget, we should be fined. If they use the 2024, I'll have to do exactly what I did last year with the exceptions.
Right.
And go through that.
Right. And we did see about $400,000 in increases in special ed, just in this budget alone.
Right. Right.
So, I just ask that in hopes that we won't lose our 240 grants.
So, the, when the 240 grants are written, the end-of-year reports are not submitted and audited yet.
Okay.
So, it's actually a two-step process. So, this year for the FY '25, 240 grant, the FY '25 numbers were being compared to FY ' '23.
Right.
And then when the, the end-of-year report was submitted, then there's another, a check of the actual FY '24 versus '25.
So, with all the switch-overs we've done, I went back to 2021 and just looked at our special ed expenditures at the Plimpton level and it's always been increased.
You should be fined. It's naturally increased because the staffing is the, is the greatest expense, right?
Right.
And so, we have special education staffing that we pay for the paraprofessionals and Sarah and I looked at that today as well as teachers, speech and language therapists, they all get raises, so we always have to increase. The formula that they use, again, I didn't have any problems once I made that exception and we'll use the same exceptions next year.
Great. Thank you very much.
Do we anticipate any challenges now that we're only looking at three to six? Because if, I mean, if we looked at it before, we had the whole...
You had the whole district, right.
We had the whole thing and there's a lot more sort of spread out there whereas I think you could have bigger moves, you know, if you're only looking at seven years.
Plimpton is very fortunate where we didn't have a lot of out-of-district kids to begin with, so it wasn't that much of a task to find those exceptions of kids that had moved on either to the middle school or, or were not, or were at the preschool or in the Silverlake High School because those are my three buckets of kids that have moved on. So, I don't think, I don't anticipate any problems. We have pretty stable out-of-district right now and I think that you shouldn't have any problems with the maintenance of EBITDA that we can pretty much get the guarantee of that money.
Awesome.
Which I can't really say that for everybody else, but I can pretty, pretty much say that with assurance.
Okay. That was my only question. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further questions? All those in favor of the budget? It's unanimous. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your work on that. Appreciate it. We are now on to our final items of the evening unless you have something else, Dr. Peru.
I have nothing else, thank you.
All right. So, dates to remember, there is a joint meeting of the Union 31 School Committees and Silverlake Regional School Committee on April 10th. And we have a very long spring break. It starts April 18th. Kids don't have to come back until April 28th. That's a Monday when we also have the next school committee meeting as well. So, at this point, we're going to adjourn into executive session not to return to regular under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiations with the Plimpton Teachers Association and executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law for the approval of our executive session minutes from March 25, 2024. Have a second on that?
Second.
All right. This is a roll call vote. Dan?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you all for being here this evening.
Thank you very much.